Welcome, everyone. We were just in executive discussion, in executive session to discuss the employment history of particular individuals where no action was taken. So, we are rejoining here. I'd like to thank everybody for their patience as Mother Nature has not quite been on our side. And reschedule this evening's meeting, as well as, I know Dr. Bowers will fill us in on the rest of snow days and all that. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers.
Okay. So, I think I'll go ahead and do this superintendent's report, and then if you're ready, we can do the snapshot of the strategic plan, or however you want to do that.
Sure.
Okay. So, I have just a couple of things that are on my report this evening. One is snow days. And, as you know, at this point, we've had three snow days, and we had one water problem day. And it was, it was a very unusual circumstance. I actually had the police at my house at 11:30 at night knocking on the door when we had the water problem. And I was at, and it was, I think it was my fault, because I, what, we were at the National Honor Society Dinner, and I turned off my ringer. And so, they were trying to call me, and it was just vibrating, it didn't wake me up. So, I had knock, 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 and I can tell you, when they, when I finally went down, and they told me why they were there, I was so relieved. I, you know, because when you get the police coming to your house, and you just don't know what it could be. So, I mean, even though it was, it was an inconvenience, and it was a bit of an issue, I think all in all, it was a really good reason to be pulled out of bed, and, in a way that was very positive. So, I'm looking at it as an issue. They, they needed us to be flexible, they needed us to be able to deal with it, and I think we did as the best we could. And then, Mother Nature has had the others. So, we, we, at this point, we have used four days, and the next time we use a day, it'll start impacting the calendar. The first day that it will impact will be Easter Monday, so after the March break. We, at this point, still have Easter Monday. If we have another snow day, that will go away. And we did something kind of unusual with the next one. If we have a sixth day, what will happen is the superintendent's conference day that we have coming up in March, will go, instead of being a full day, will go to a half a student day and a half of superintendent's conference day, so we can use that in lieu of that. Beyond that, we do not have any impact, or at least, it's not been decided that we will have an impact with how everything works out. We could actually have nine snow days before it would impact state aid. And so, we're, I think we're going to be hopefully fine. Hopefully, the worst part of the winter is already past, and we can move on, so, but we, that's, that's what we've been dealing with over the last couple of weeks, so we appreciate everybody's flexibility. I know how difficult it is when you get a call in the morning, and you know that you have to figure out and juggle and find somebody to be with your kids if you have to work, and, you know, we, we're very cognizant of that. But, in this situation, we make our decisions based on safety. And so, that's the long and short of it. The other thing to think about, too, is, for people who live in the village, where it may not look so problematic, we have some hills in this area that our buses travel on, and these kind of windy roads, and it's a very different system, sometimes on top of the hill, or top of the mountain, than it is down here. And when we make our decisions, we oft, we also have to think about the transportation up there. And so, there's a lot of things to consider, but always, it's whatever's in the best interest of students and safety, and that's what we're going to go by, so. I apologize for so many snow days, but it is what it is.
And also, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
You also convene with other superintendents in the area.
Yep.
And have discussions with them.
So, when we have any kind of inclement weather, all the superintendents in the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs get on a conference call at 4:30 in the morning. And so, we, we kind of talk about the different, what other people are seeing or hearing. We talk about the transportation, what they see as far as their directors of transportation, what they're suggesting. There are times, I know that you may have slightly different storms. Generally, the, the superintendents in Putnam County have very similar situations. And so, Putnam County tends to make similar decisions. You might not have some of the Westchester districts that make it, like in Bedford and some other areas, because they just have a different system. And so, it seems like there's a point at which you have more snow, and down below, you don't have as much snow. So, that's also considered.
Thanks. Just want people to understand that it's not just done in a vacuum. These decisions are not made in a vacuum. There's a lot of thought.
Yeah.
That goes into it.
You guys have to share the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sorry, do you need this?
No, you have to share.
We can do a duet. Okay.
I was reading my cues from the cameraman.
Thanks, Ann. This is how it was.
So, tonight, we're going to be sharing two things with you. We're going to be giving you kind of a snapshot of where we are in year three of our strategic plan, and what we have planned for the remaining of this school year. And we're also going to be talking about the rollover budget. And we did get our state aid runs, our first state aid runs, from the New York State Education Department, and also from the governor's office. And there's more information that's shared. It's, it's the amount of foundation aid, which is the money that we get to run the schools. And then, there are other types of aid that we get, that will help us with things like transportation, and buildings, and building aid. And we do have an understanding, as far as the first run goes, where that's going to be for next year. It can change. Last year, we did have a second run that came, but Ann will kind of take us through that and talk about that. So, Ann, at this point, has calculated the rollover budget, which basically is, if we have exactly what we have now, as we move into the next school year, how much, how much more will it cost the district? And that includes contracts and other things that go along with that calculation. ERS, TRS, the retirement systems, the insurance, all of that gets put into that. So, Ann did calculate that. We also have a very preliminary understanding of the tax levy limit that she'll talk about, and we'll talk about what's, what has come from the state. But as far as foundation aid goes, between last year and, or this year, this present year and next year, I guess I should say it that way, we've received an additional $4,000. So, it's, it's not going to be a very, it's going to be a very lean year. It's not going to be flush with money coming from the state, so we know that. Our next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, February 6th. And originally, we were going to have a meeting on the 7th, and, as you know, we're with Garrison, but we are now back to the 6th. And we are also going to have our public hearing, which we were going to have Tuesday evening, but it had to be canceled because of snow. So, that's coming up. And a reminder, again, the First Annual Haldane Central School District Family and Friends University will be held on January 30th, which is a Tuesday, and we invite you to come. We have some wonderful speakers. We have, we were providing dinner at 5 o'clock, so you can come with your families and have dinner. At 6 o'clock, we are going to have babysitting, so that the, the children can go in with our babysitting team, and the parents can come in. And we have multiple speakers that are really talking about some of the, the issues that our teens and our pre-teens deal with as, as they grow up, and some of the difficult things that they have to contend with, that we didn't have to contend with. So, we hope that you can find time to come and join us. So, okay, so.
Family and Friends University starts at what time?
5 to 6 is dinner, and 6 to 8:30 is our speakers. We have one speaker, the keynote, where everybody will be in that in one group, and then we have two breakout sessions. We suggest that everybody go to both breakout sessions. One is going to be the mother of a young person who lost their life because of a drug overdose, and she's going to talk a little bit about some of the things that she's learned in her journey. And we're also going to have something called Hidden Mischief, and you're going to see a picture of a teenage, teenager's bedroom, and you're going to be asked to look through the picture and see what the things are that, that pop out at you that could be problematic. And if they don't pop out at you, the people who are presenting, which will be the CTC, will tell you what things you should be worried about if you didn't notice them. And so, this is something that can, it's kind of a heads-up for parents of things that you might want to consider, you might want to look at, and even people that have been dealing with teenagers all their lives, there's still things that, I'm amazed that vape pens that look just like computer sticks, and some of the other things that you would have no idea that it was something other than just a computer stick. And so, there's, there's a lot of things that we can learn. I'm sure our teenagers know some of them, but the adults don't, so, so please join us for that.
No, you just, the, the public hearing, I think you said this, but I, the public hearing regarding the use of the repair reserve funds will be on the 6th.
On the 6th.
At 6:30.
At 6, I didn't say 6:30, but yes.
Okay, that's what I said. I just wanted to.
We have to, we actually have to approve that later on in the meeting.
Oh, we do.
So, yes, tentatively, until we get to the approval process.
Oh, exactly, okay. It'll be the 6th.
That's the expectation.
Yes.
That hopefully it will be. All right, so, I don't know who's.
I'm going to step out to the side, so we can.
Okay. So, we're going to talk a little bit about where we are with our strategic plan, and if you could go to the, the next slide. We are, basically, what I have done is, I've put up the 10 goals, and they are the ones that were written, oop, sorry. I put up the 10 goals, and these are the ones that were written by the Strategic Planning Committee, and I, I'm giving you kind of an overall understanding of the focus of that goal, and kind of where we are as far as teaching and learning. So, the first goal is regarding teaching and learning. And from what we're talking about, we talk about learning strategies, we talked about collaborative environments, we talk about best practices, implementing common core, rigor, relevance, and deep thinking, and reflection, and innovation. So, all of those words, if you think about what we have within the school district, you know that our teachers have taken on and have integrated all of the things that are here over the last three years. We've been working with the New Tech Network that have, they have helped us. We've also worked with P E B C early on to talk about metacognitive types of instruction, and understanding teaching kids to think about their thinking. And so, we are well into the focus on all of these different teaching and learning initiatives. And the important thing is that our teachers were given the, the self-efficacy to be able to bring some of these new type of endeavors into the classroom, but the important thing is the learning. And what we really are focusing on, the teaching produces the learning that we hope our kids have, and I'm hoping that most families have seen that there have been some, some philosophical changes that have happened in teaching that have, are allowing our kids to deal with deep learning experiences, really take, look at the initiatives that we're doing, and not necessarily, I know that there are certain things, certain buzz phrases that have been not necessarily well-received, but it's, it's teaching kids to learn and to be cognizant in their learning, metacognitive, and looking at deeper learning experiences. So, I think we're well on our way to Goal 1. So, Goal 2, professional development. So, you've been hearing us share with all of the practitioners that we've been working with over the last four years, to really bring in and understand the concepts that we're hoping our kids deal with and learn from day-to-day. And we've sent our practitioners to different places throughout the nation to see best practice. We have teams of teachers that go to an institute in the summer, and really immerse themselves in some of the new strategies that we're working with. And this is the professional development that we've been talking so much about. We have integrated co-teaching, and we have coaches coming in for integrated co-teaching that help us support the students that need a little more support in a mainstream classroom, where we could have both a special educator and a mainstream teacher working together. And that's, that's well-integrated into all grades of K-12, so, professional development. Goal 3, again, going back to the teaching and learning, is making sure that we foster and support the ongoing passion for teaching and learning, once again, by implementing authentic problem, project-based experiences that provoke engagement, motivation, and deeper learning. And again, this is an extension of what we had in Goal 1, this is just bringing it to the next level. The other things, excuse me, that we talked about is civic and social, career and civic duties and responsibilities. When we had our pre-discussions for the strategic plan, what came out for all our students is the need for civic engagement and understanding what goes on. So, the fourth one. Fourth goal that came out of our strategic plan is to look at the space and technology, excuse me, supports that promote deeper learning. We are, we've talked about space and the best use of space, and as you know, we have DCI classrooms now, we have our maker spaces, and we have integrated technology throughout the district. And so, all of these processes are well in, well ingrained and continuing. Goal 5, learner profiles. We have, we started, our learner profiles last year, we're in the second year. We've actually gone deeper with our learner profiles this year than we were last year, and we will anticipate that will continue. So, excuse me.
Can you mention, what grade, what grade are we on with the learner profiles?
The, last year, we started with grades 4, 7, and 9. And then, this year, we did 4, 7, and 9 again, so now we have 5, 8, and 10 that already have them.
Gotcha.
And so, we're, we have introduced them to 6th grades. And then, when we start going, our 4th graders, when they get to 7th grade, so after another year, then they will be doing, they will have their second profile done. And they should see.
Which is the more in-depth.
Which is more in-depth, and the classes that they're taking get more and more informative. And so, by the time they hit 9th grade, they're learning about the teenage brain, they're learning about the profiles, and as we go through, we will have, this year, we have 6th grades that have been profiled, next year, it will go to 9, and then it will continue on. So, they are well underway. And we've worked with Dr. Yellen, we continue to work with Dr. Yellen, our coaches. We now have five coaches in the district that are our teachers, that are now teaching the teachers, which was another aspect of this that we wanted to make sure would occur. Goal 6, extracurricular opportunities. We continue to support and to grow our extracurricular opportunities, both sports, in the arts, and clubs. All of these, we continue to grow and to learn, especially the clubs and the areas of interest, when students have an area of interest. We do have the opportunity for students to try something, to go to, to go one, to an advisor and say, "We'd like to try this club," if, if it is successful, and it's something that our kids want, and it's, and they put their energies and time into it. We have the ability, or the conduit, where it can continue on, and the club can become a regular part of the school. And we've had a number of clubs that have been approved over the last couple of years, so what we have, what we have always had, and now we're continuing on with that. Learning outside the Haldane campus. If you look through the year of the trips that our kids go on, whether it's Washington, DC, it's down to Louisiana, the different areas, if they go on a ski trip, there are a lot of opportunities that they have to travel elsewhere. Travel to Europe, travel to, to, to Canada, and we continue to support, and we have an extensive number of trips for our kids as they go through the years. I think that if, that this is an area we could continue to do more. They were, we're talking about virtual travel, as well as physical travel, and that may be something that we want to consider over the next couple of years, the 5th, 4th, and the 5th year of the strategic plan. We certainly physically go elsewhere, but I don't, but there may be some room for more virtual learning.
The other piece of this, Diana, that I think is related, oh, sorry.
The other piece of this, I thi, I think that's related to this, is, just, it's just been a few years that we, the district reinstituted the internship at the end of the senior year.
Yes.
Which, granted, is at the end of the senior year, but it is certainly an attempt to take advantage of the.
That's true.
Of the resources within the community, and I think, I think that's something, in addition to having kids go outside of the community, my memory of the strategic planning was that, that there was also a real recognition that kids could get a lot of non-traditionally academic learning within the community outside of the campus. And I, I think that's happened to, the, the internship is the one example of that that I can think of.
As well as Melissa Sideman's class also introduces people from within the community, sorry, from within the community, in the classroom, so it's not necessarily an internship. I also wanted to point out the program that we do with Evans School in the Bronx. There's a lot of different opportunities that we've been taking advantage of.
Okay. Goal 8, what we just started talking a little bit about, is our fiscal plans. We continue to try to look within our budget and come up with unique strategies to stretch the money we already have. And if, if you look at the amount that our foundation aid has gone up over the last few years, we're not going to get it from outside. We know we need to get it from some other way, and do, to do things that are slightly different, and start processes that, that bring money into the district. And we have been doing that over the last many years, and this will continue. And as we develop the budget season this year, we will be looking at kind of unique ways of thinking out of the box and, and budgeting smarter. So, that's something that we've been doing every year, and we will continue to do so this year. It's, it's necessary in order for us to keep the programs that we have, and support some new, new initiatives that we want to continue to grow here. Goal 9, facilities planning. We're also going to be talking about, as you've been, if you've been watching the board meetings, we've been talking about the potential of a bond referendum to really update some of the areas within our facilities that need to be updated. And these are kind of nuts and bolts things, but we've also been able to do some of the things that are a little bit glitzy. And if you look at, if you are in our, our big gym, if you look at some of the changes in the large gym, and how beautiful and professional, and all the new things that are there, that's all been within the last couple of years. If you go down to the field, we've finished up many different things and helped to support the creation of our beautiful new facilities there, including bathrooms, which we hadn't had before. And so, those are some of the things we've been doing. But right now, our focus, as we continue the conversation, is really to make sure that our buildings are the best to educate kids, and, and we, we keep a healthy, happy environment here with our facilities planning. So, that's also been an area of focus. And then, our last goal, partnering with the Haldane community to foster, foster our strategic plan, and it has been a living, breathing document. We've had people that have helped us develop it, and have kind of monitored it as we continue through the process. And so, I think if you look at the 10 goals, I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping this a, a living document, and something that grows, and kind of, it's, it's something that monitors, that we monitor, and it's something that moves us in directions. And so, the document is, once again, an end of the third year, and it's, it's a living document, so we will see more.
All right. Thank you. And do you want to go into, do you want to do the rollover budget?
Can we talk about it?
Sure.
And I'm supposed to use this mic.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying not to disturb you.
So, Diana, I don't think I was able to make it, but you brought together the folks who had worked on the strategic plan.
Right.
Together last year.
And the year before, yeah.
And the year before. So, one of the things, I guess, I, you know, was part of the process, I read these a few times, but I was actually reading them really carefully again this year. If I had had my editor hat on at the time, I would have broken them up into more than one sentence, like, but they're, because each one of them, like, I remember the conversations that went into each one of them. And they, the, the goals do a good job of capturing what we heard in that process. But those are thick, heavy sentences with a lot of ideas that not necessarily, for good reason, every person in the community is going to understand. And so, so one of my comments is, you've had the meeting with the folks who worked on the strategic plan before. I guess I would want to reiterate in our, our ongoing effort to really invite community feedback, that to the extent that there are folks out there watching this meeting, reading about it in the paper, and going and looking at the strategic documents, if there, if there is a desire to unpack that, I would encourage people, I mean, we could do it a couple of different ways. I mean, we could go to somebody like the PTA and say, you know, "We're, we're, we're happy to devote a, a, a meeting to helping to unpack some of the language in these." If folks asked for a meeting, you know, I, I'm sure we would hold a meeting where we unpack all of the stuff that's in there, because it, it's a lot, and, like, all of those words are meaningful, I think, to people, again, I'm repeating myself, but to people who were part of the process. But for someone coming into it who's new to the district, who's got kids, who was, you know, had other things going on, and wasn't paying attention, I, I guess I would just encourage people to reach out to, to your office, to a board member, and let us, like, is there a desire for that? I can imagine there's a lot of people who don't want to spend an hour or two hours unpacking all the sentence as well, and that's fine. But to the extent that that desire's there, I, I want to let people know that that's something we're committed to, making sure, and, and people know that we're committed to, because I don't want people to think, like, "Oh, that's just a lot, that's just a lot of lingo," right? I mean, it, there are a lot of terms in there, but they have, in many cases, really pretty specific meanings. They're, they're heavy pieces. That's one, and then I have another point after that, but.
I just wanted to agree with you, and I think that it might be interesting, at some point next year, when we review these again, if, Diana, you feel like doing some more work before you leave in July. Diana's like, "I just did this." Doing examples of what each goal.
I was thinking of that, with every single one of them, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it really just helps to paint, like, a quick bullet point picture, and it's not to dumb anything down, I don't think we need to let, it's, it's not that, it's just another way to gain access.
That's a good idea.
So, learning outside the Haldane campus, five examples that we kind of said, right? But if they were just bullet pointed, trip to, you know, DC, trip to Louisiana, internships, Sideman's class, you know, just to give, let people know quickly, like, what this goal means in, like, a tangible.
Right, yeah.
Way.
Yeah. What, I mean, those of us involved in this know what those examples are, but I think that the notion of making, and I think the, the district does a lot of things to articulate what's happening that's exciting, but I think, I don't know, for some reason, rereading things again, I was like, "Oh, wow." Like, if I were to do this again, I would have been in there, like, break, you know, having some separate, sort of separating pieces of this, but I think they, they do a good job. I, I think that's great, the idea of, of, and I think, actually, I think our administrators, often in their reports, are giving us examples of how the strategic plan is being carried out. But I just think that's something we want to continue, to let people know that it is a document that drives what happens in this, in the district on a regular basis. I think the other thing I wanted to say, is while I completely agree with everything about the facilities statement, right, we've made really nice improvements, and necessary improvements in the gym, and finished the field, and, you know, all the things there, and, and done some other things, I, I think it's also important, at least from my perspective, thinking back to what people were hoping for in those conversations, were to address some of the really pretty severe space constraints that we face. space constraints that we face in this district that do put limits on what we can do and, and the, the opportunities for kids to, to engage with each other outside of sort of formal classroom structures and just what kind of classes we can offer and where. You know, the fact that so many of our teachers, especially up at the high school, don't have their own classrooms, you know, there, there, there are some real constraints. And that, and that the, the, the budget climate, right, the, the fiscal climate is, is a real, that, that becomes really very challenging, sort of having the kind of, not elaborate, but really meeting all of our needs, space, I think is something that is still outside of our reach. I, I would say that. And, and what we're focusing all our time and, and attention on are important things, but there are things to bring up, to make things safe and to address issues that have, have been, because of budget constraints have been, we've had to neglect. And so I do think that's the, that's the one place where I think we've done everything that we can, but in terms of what, at least the folks that made, were participating in the strategic plan had in mind, we're, we're, we're not there. And we're not going to be there.
And I, I'm just going to, uh, add with this point, there were tremendous improvements made to, um, the gym, and I do have to say that most of that was due to a fundraising effort, which we are very appreciative of the community effort, um, you know, that goes into that. And sometimes people may not realize and the lines get blurred, but those efforts were primarily nothing to do with our budget. And, again, that's the great community that we live in. We have wonderful folks that are always willing to step up to the plate and, um, help out. Unfortunately, you're right, Peggy, there are fiscal restraints and we're doing the best that we can as a district to try to get things up to par in terms of safety. But, so.
So going back to what you were talking about, Peggy, some of the other places I would, um, direct some of our parents or any community member that has an interest in going to is we have our newsletters that have been going on, um, throughout the many years that focus on different parts of it. The other is the almanac. And for the last two summers, we've, right before the beginning of school, we have sent out the Haldane almanac, which really gives a K-12 perspective of some of the things that we've done. So, um, we have had parent meetings, um, they aren't necessarily always as well as attended as we hope, but there, there's been a lot of outreach. But I think it's, it's a good idea. I think if we pass this around to teachers and to our administrators and we ask people to put bullets, I'm sure we could come up with a lot of bullets under each of the goals. And I have to say that when I was going through this and I was reading, rereading the goals and I was looking at all the different components of them, um, I really feel that this is something that, um, which is, um, very actively directing us.
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, there are times that people will say that there's strategic plans that get put out on a shelf and, and they don't go anywhere. But this has been, um, this has been something that has been pushing us into specific areas of interest and has helped us go deeper. I was very pleased. And I think it's all the work of the people that's, are sitting out there and all the teachers and the students and, um, you know, it's, it really is a collective community, including the community and the community outreach that we have that is creating this. So it's certainly not just the district, it's certainly the community and, and the, and the ideas of the community are living here as well.
And I just have one, and the thing about the, the, the plan is just so, it's just so smooth. The, the implementation has just been so smooth and, and so consistent. Like, the, the skills have just been building, that, where it gets to the point where the students may not even realize, like, what they even have. What's going on in the elementary school, build to the middle school, to the high school, where, um, where the, and then onto college, where they don't even realize how prepared they are for college, uh, on the level, uh, what they've done with the Google Classroom and Google Docs. It's, it's just, it's just been, it's just been amazing. And, I mean, the, the way the students, I see it, they collaborate online and it's, it's, it's just been really very consistent. Uh, the, the professional development also with the staff. I mean, for our new principals, that, you know, they come in here and they, they, they see the staff and, but this was not necessarily, you know, going on, the, 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 the two-hour meetings. Like, a lot has been done. There's been major changes in just the philosophy of PD and collaboration with teachers. And it's just, but it, but it wasn't just thrown in, it wasn't just like one, you know, one, one, one day they came in and said, this is the new way of doing things. It was just smooth, consistent, and, and, and it continues to build. So, so it's, it's really good and, and that's a great point that you made as far as putting the bullet points in, uh, to really, you know, because, because we can all sit here and probably say, oh, yeah, this, this, this. So, um, it's great.
So I'd also like to remind you that on the website, there is a document called Strategic Plan Implementation. And it takes us through, um, the last three years and into this year. And although I think I need to update it, um, it's probably, I know I, I did it the fall, but I haven't included, um, really into the winter yet. But take a look at that and you can see that kind of smoothing, it's pages and pages of things that have happened. Um, and we, we try to keep it recent because if we ever tried to go back and do it from memory, it would never happen. So, um, you know, we're just, we continue to do that. So that's also something that's very helpful.
Yeah, I think to some extent, my point was wanting people to know that there are real, there are real examples of everything in the strategic plan, and you're right. There, you, the district, there have been the newsletters, there have been the almanacs, you know, there are these other, um, these other documents. And, uh, yeah, um, really wanting, I mean, wanting people to recognize the, you know, my perception and I think the board's perception of this as being authentic work. You know, really genuine, authentic work driven by what we know about what makes for good teaching and learning. So.
And we need to practice what we preach.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we want to move into, um, the budget?
Sure. Okay, so.
It's an exciting meeting, the first budget meeting. I'm not tired of it yet. We've never gotten too bad news yet.
Okay, so Ann has been busy calculating. And she, um, is, today what we're going to give you is just the first blush of the information as, and we literally just got the, the first run, um, this, this week. So this is hot off the press and we're trying to come up with other bits of information that can help the kind of amorphous images come into focus, so.
Right, so I just want to, on that note, um, say that this was the presentation that was scheduled for Tuesday night. The governor's proposal came out yesterday. So everyone's very excited that tonight is going to be that. But that's, you know, we'll give a little sneak peek, a little highlight, but those discussions are for the next meeting. So we might just pretend for a little bit that we don't have a whole, you know, pages of numbers that Ann hasn't had a chance to really dig into yet because it just came out yesterday. But, um, so the rollover budget is, um, you know, we're going to go over what is a rollover budget and then just some preliminary information that we have to, to bring us, um, to the summary and then go over the budget parameters of how the board wants the budget development this year to look. So what is a rollover budget? I know that, that it's already been said, it's the starting point of most school budgets and it's how we build our budget here. Based on contractual obligations and what we know right now, what will it cost to operate the school district next year with the current staff and current programs? So not counting any retirements or, um, any changes, any additions or subtractions, just what would it cost for next year? And then from that starting point, we, uh, you know, we include any changes that we are going to know about, any retirements, um, changes in program, whether they're additions or, or deletions. What do I know right now? I know that our health premium are set to increase for 3.75%. TRS and ERS, we have projections. TRS is an estimate, um, it's a 12 and a quarter percent increase. Last year, we enjoyed a, a pretty big decrease, um, but we did have the warning that don't be too comfortable with it because TRS is in a little bit of a change with their rates. So it's estimated that it's going to be 11% of our, our professional payroll, up from 9.8%. ERS is virtually unchanged again, it was last year as well. That's really stable. ERS is a smaller percentage of the budget when it comes to, to retirement. But, and that is a known percentage, TRS, there's a lag of a year. So it's supposed to be around 11%. Their estimates are, are usually pretty good, so I'm not worried about that it's going to go up higher than that. Like I said, the governor's executive proposal was, uh, financial information was just released yesterday. On the next slide, I have a few highlights. The Consumer Price Index change, um, is greater than 2%. So our, um, tax levy, uh, the allowable levy growth factor is a 2%. Last year it was, uh, 1.26%. So we will be at the maximum, this year we can be, um, in the calculation. I don't have all of the information, um, that goes into that calculation for the tax levy limit. There are still some pending numbers from the state, so, um, we don't know exactly, I don't know exactly what our tax levy limit is going to be, but, uh, we do know that it's, um, at the 2%. Some highlights of the proposal is that, um, although there is an increase in school aid, it's about half of what school districts estimate that they need to maintain current services. Looking ahead, the governor is proposing to cap the growth in expense-driven aid at 2% beginning in the 1920 school year. That's disturbing in that usually expense-driven aid, or it's also known as formula aid, are based on your expenditures from the year before. So in transportation, we have a set percentage, you know? We say our building aid is 34% and our transportation aid is 32. There, there's no limit on those. So if we had large expenditures in one year, the following year, the formula aid would kick in and we would get that reimbursement, we know what it would be. He's proposing to cap that at a 2% growth, so that will squeeze our budgets even more, so that now our expense-driven aids, um, will be capped. Or he's proposing that it'll be capped. When this, in April, when the real budget comes out, this might roll off the table. But right now, it's just something to keep in the back of your mind, that going forward, it's another strategy to decrease the aid to schools. The gap elimination is gone and now there's another, another one, another method they've come up with. Um, another one where this would affect us. We don't have a huge, um, summer special ed program that we get reimbursement for. It happened several years ago where they decreased the percentage that they would reimburse us for summer special ed programs. They're, um, proposing to decrease that again. And what it does is it would just shift the, um, the expense to the general fund budget again, increasing the line item there that, um, isn't as large as it is right now. So the rollover budget, um, as it stands right now, is a 3.75% increase over the current year's final budget. Eight hundred, $81,756 more is what it would cost in addition to run the same programs with the same staff next year. Just to note that last year's rollover budget was, um, just under $500,000 increase. It was a 2.1% increase. But I want to point out that because of those increases that I, um, showed about the benefits, $300,000 of that 881 is attributable to employee benefit rates going up. So, um, it's close to, if you take those items out, it is close. Our operating costs are consistent, except for the benefits this year. Last year, um, we, I think we stayed within all of the parameters that the board set for us. And, um, this year, I'm presuming that it's the same, but, um, I won't check those boxes off until we have, uh, the, the board discuss that and then any additional directives that you would like us to keep in mind as we go forward and develop this year's budget.
Are we talking about that now? Are we talking about that a different?
We can, if we're prepared to do so. Sorry. We can.
Well, it's an ongoing.
Yeah, it's ongoing, uh, basically for every meeting from here on out, we're going to be discussing budget
Yep.
In some form. I like what's here currently. I don't know that I have any additional suggestions at the moment, but something that did pop into my mind and that we continue to have discussions about is, um, potential, um, increase relating to what it would look like for a capital referendum of our size, um, what that would mean in terms of
Dollars and cents.
Dollars and cents. That's the only, uh, thing that came to mind. I don't know if anybody else had it.
I have two things that come to mind. I'm sure I can have some more, but off the cuff. Um, one is, um, class size. Class size comes up all the time for us every year. But I want to emphasize it and I almost feel like it's something that we should make sure is like on the list. And I, and I think we need to start talking about class size K through 12. You know, I think we always talk about it K through 2, but I think it's come up a bit in the past year or so that we need to look at what's happening in the middle school and in the high school and are those classes getting too big? And are we, are we keeping the classes as small as, as they should be, as we want them to be? For proper educational environments. So, um, and I don't know exactly the answer to that, like, what we're currently doing and is it good enough? But I'd like us to keep that in mind as we deal with budget, um, is class size, which we always do. So it's one thing that comes to my mind and the other thing that comes to my mind is something that the board has kind of mentioned, um, but I want to say it out loud, is that I think we need to look a little bit at, at what we're offering in terms of mental health services and if we're, we're really doing enough, um, for our students. Um, and if we should be allocating more funds. And I, I understand that that might mean taking away funds from elsewhere. But I think we need to make sure that we're offering our students everything they need to really be, you know, uh, those college career citizens that we say we want them to be, but we're not really providing much mental, the mental health part of that, the social, emotional services. So I think we need to, to look at that and talk about that. And I, I've mentioned this to, to Dr. Bowers as well, um, and to keep that in mind as we budget.
So just as a, um, kind of a caveat with, with that, um, we have been in conversation with Cove Care, um, which is a Putnam County organization who will be joining us for our Family and Friends University. They're one of our partners. And they, uh, we've been talking about using some of their grant funding to provide an extra mental health. to provide an extra mental health person within the district. And so that would be through Putnam County's actual funding. And it is something that we hope will work out. And we are in the process of having the conversation. So we may have, we have one of their support services personnel here, and this may be a second. And so we may be able to do it without necessarily impacting our budget, but it, we would have the services. And it would be services that we have not only during the day, but we can also have it for the community. And one of the problems that we've been talking about, and you know, throughout the years, is the fact that we're so far away from Carmel, and that's where we have the majority of support is. And we need to figure out how to get the services over to this side of the county. And so that's one of the reasons why this is a very possible and hopefully probable thing that will be happening, and it will give us support through the school day. We were talking, I think we were talking about something like 9:30 to 5:30, where they are here for the majority of the day for the kids. And, but they're also here through late afternoon, so parents can come in and we can have some family therapy. They're not, they won't necessarily be our therapist, but they will be able to work with the community and get some reimbursement from whatever the medical pieces that they get it from. And so that may be just the best of both worlds. That could be a win-win for both of us.
And I just want to embellish, not embellish, but sort of say what I know about Jen's thinking because I know Jen began to think about this a lot, which she and I went to the New York State School Board Association convention in October, and we're hearing a number of the different things that districts around the state are doing to address the prevention component related to, in particular, the opioid epidemic. But I think we know that there's a rise in depression and anxiety-related symptoms, issues for young adults throughout the country, and this community included. And really Jen's commitment to really thinking about how, what can the district do to promote the other prevention efforts that are, that lots of folks are engaged in, right? Like just how, what's another thing that we could, we could do, so?
Yeah, I mean, my dream for Haldane is that kids can go get math help just as easily as they go get, you know, help from their therapist. That it's, it's all part of the equation, and it's, there's no stigma behind it, and it's always available. Like that would be my dream, that we're really teaching to the whole child, which is social, emotional, as well as math and science. That's like several steps away, but I think we need to start somewhere and see what else we can be doing and how we can get creative about it.
And bringing that into the Friends and Family University, I think is a great idea, to begin to communicate to the community that the commitment to bring these services in, to really help do everything we can to inoculate, do everything we can to inoculate our kids.
I don't know exactly how this would go in, but with our superintendent search coming up, to have some sense of, some type of funds, you know, so whenever we start interviewing and we hire a person, you know, and they, with, you know, ideas and want to do this and bring this or whatever it is, that we, we're not, we're in a position where we're like, okay, well, we budgeted for the possibility that we might want to be bringing something on. I don't know what it is or so forth. Like the way, like when we brought Diana on, we knew professional development was going to be big. So we put funding in for that. So, you know, I, you know, you know what I'm saying? So this way, if somebody comes and says, oh, I would love to bring this, we're not all like, oh, well, we can't afford that. You know, so at least we anticipate that we might have some funding. Now, again, it'll probably be within the guidelines of staff development, technology and so forth. So I don't know if, just to have an earmark in the sense of if someone comes in and says they would like to implement this type of whatever, we know that the funding is there for it.
Although, when I see that 3.75 percent for the rollover budget. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I saw 3.75 and I was, and I was like, oh, that, that looks hard.
It's shocking initially. Again, this is our first stab.
Apparently, we have a shorter, we have a shorter tape, so.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Is it shocking? Are you, can you see the shock?
Would I like it, I'd like it to be, I'd like it to be a bit lower, you know, we all would. I'd like it to be, oh, wow, there's no increase at all.
Then reality hits.
Yeah. It is a little higher than it, than it's been. And the fact that I did a tentative calculation of the tax levy limit and we're about at $500,000, so there's a gap. So there's going to have to be some discussion. And, you know, what I wanted to also put out there is to be mindful of really, in the climate of that we've been operating under, you can't just think about next year's budget. You have to think further, maybe two years down the road. Because if, if the, nothing's coming to mind except the word threat, sorry. If the threat is that we're going to be capped on our, our formula aids, that's something to think about too, the following year. Not just how are we going to get through next year? We have to think about a couple of years out. So it's multi-year budgeting, really, as we're thinking of these things. So I, I'm not, I'm not going to lose any sleep right now because I know the changes that happen between now and April. So, yeah, I think we're going to have to be talking about creative ways to come up with funds this year.
Okay, we'll change the tapes.
So due to, weather is being postponed until after midterms. And the clubs in the school are going to use that opportunity to reach out to students who might not know what some of the clubs offer, like freshmen or students who just haven't been involved before. So I think that'll be a good opportunity when we get to do that. Also, auditions for the musical were held last week, and the cast list has been posted. And I think rehearsals started this week. Tonight, there was one, I believe. So that's getting started. And as was mentioned earlier, the senior class has been starting to learn more about the internship program at the end of the year. Sidemen spoke to her classes about it last week, and she talked to us about some of the potential internships we could participate in. The internships this year, which is a, they're starting on May 21st. Instead of typically at the beginning of the fourth quarter, seniors only have to go to their AP classes and then stop going once the exam happens. But due to some concerns from other teachers, this year, everybody's starting on the 21st through the end of the school year. And recently Congressman Sean Patrick Maloney came to talk to Ms. Sidemen's government classes about his role in Congress, and he gave us the opportunity to ask him some questions about different aspects of his policy or things happening currently.
That's great. Thank you, May. Something that I texted actually with May about, and hopefully will get in the near future, is I'd like May to reach out to the middle school and elementary school student councils as well, so we can kind of get a grasp of what's happening K through 12. Appreciate all the input from the high school, but maybe some other people would like to hear about what's going on. And that's why I had to mention, maybe touch base with middle school and elementary student councils as well. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Wallach.
Good evening, everybody. Always want to tell you about some fun things that are happening at the elementary level. And this week, we had a really, really fun thing in kindergarten in Ms. Cretar's class and Ms. LeMans' class with the assistance of Mr. Duder, our DCI teacher. And it was, it was a mini golf course. Original plan was to have it outside, in the courtyard outside the elementary school. Mother Nature certainly didn't cooperate with that. Sounds like a fun idea for kindergarten, as it was really nothing but a fun idea. But in reality, there was a lot of educational work that went into that. It was part of the Science 21, uh, Science 21 curriculum from Putnam Northwest or SBOC's. And it was a unit on force, motion, and all the things that went along with that. It really was a six-week-long study where the students learned the scientific aspects that went along with that. Mr. Duder helped both classes build their mini golf courses. There were 11 holes that were actually scattered throughout both classrooms because of the weather. The students all had jobs. They researched what the job needed to be to build the holes. They had, if anyone saw them or anyone saw the pictures of them, all the holes were different and had different themes, and the students had to research what went along with that. So while it was a science project, it also was a PBL deeper learning project. It also integrated mathematics. It also integrated social studies. It also integrated every area that our, that our students do. The parents were all invited in. We love to invite our parents in to participate in our activities. And just about every parent in the garden classes were able to come on Tuesday morning. I know Dr. Bowers was there as well for part of the time as well. So it's just a great activity. And I know most of you don't have children in the elementary school. But we do fun things that really help our children, and that's what schools should be about. So I just wanted to share that with you this month, as this month's fun activity for our elementary school. So, so thank you.
Okay, Ms. Silke.
Happy New Year, everyone. Couple upcoming events. Monday at the Desmond Fish Library, Ms. Anisi's seventh grade class is going to be having a viewing party that's hosted by the Putnam History Museum. This is at 6:30 on Monday at the Desmond Fish Library. Ms. Gessens' Discover, Create, and Innovate class has met with the Cold Spring Mayor twice to discuss project design for beautifying the tunnel and also project designs for a park. So this Tuesday, the 23rd, the class, the Gessens class will be presenting to the Village Board of Cold Spring. And that will be at 7:30 PM at Village Hall on Tuesday, the 23rd. The, the dance that was snowed out in the, a few weeks ago, is going to be on February 9th. And the PTA is going to be providing some additional activities aside from dancing, such as the karaoke machine is going to be up and running and face painting. So that's, and that's grade six, seven, and eight. So that's going to be a very nice, well-attended event for our students. And last but not least, the middle school improvement team has picked Wunder as the book for the Community Read this year. And the Community Read is going to be on February 22nd at 6:30 PM. We're going to kick off the event on Friday, February 2nd with a Drop Everything and Read. So all of the middle school students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, will be reading the first few chapters of Wunder to get them excited about our Community Read. So thanks for the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
I think May kind of under highlighted just a little bit Sean Patrick Maloney. I have to say, Sean Patrick Maloney came up to me after the event and specifically was talking about a few of our students, maybe one of them, in regards to the questioning that our high school students had and the amount of work that they have done as it relates to current public policy. I was super impressed. He said that was more intense questioning than I receive in any town hall public forum session that I attend. So bravo to the 30 students who, on their lunchtime, went to discuss current policy with our congressman.
So if I could also echo that, because I was very impressed with his presentation as well. And, you know, being somebody cool, I hope I'm well-read and I hope I have an idea. There were things he was sharing that I found fascinating. So thank you to him for coming in and providing that experience to all our kids.
Definitely. Just want to highlight the National Honor Society evening that took place by the night. Margaret was there and Dr. Bowers was there. But we inducted 43 students into the National Honor Society. I'd like to highlight Nicole Mitchell, who is the current president of the National Honor Society, and just spoke so eloquently to the new inductees. So congratulations to all of them, to Ms. Preparo and Ms. Granuzzi for their hard work that night. I also just want to, the process of inviting the Garrison students here to see Haldane is in the process of getting started. I will be presenting to the Garrison Board of Ed on February 7th. And then the Garrison students will be here on February 13th with a parent evening that night as well. We also welcome the Garrison parents to attend the board meeting at Garrison in addition to the presentation here, whatever night works better for them. So.
Thank you. Mr. Sol. Oh, sorry.
Yep, you know, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements in the world of athletics. Tomorrow, our varsity boys basketball team has a home game at 6:00. And it's a very special night because the Booster Club and the Basketball Association are doing a fundraiser to raise awareness of juvenile diabetes specifically. We have a couple of boys on the team who are impacted, a couple of community members. So tomorrow's going to be a nice night with donations and speeches and just, you know, please come out and support a great cause as well as our boys. Our boys are also playing on Saturday at 3 o'clock at Vassar against Pauling, so another special event. So if you have the time, please come out and support them. Also want to give a huge shout out to our girls' basketball team. Last week, they had an outstanding week. They won all three games that they played. Two of the games were very special. We beat a team in Hastings who was undefeated. The girls played exceptionally well, that was here. And then last Thursday, the girls went up to RCK, which is Royce Ketchum, and beat a double A school, which is four times our size. So the girls are playing extremely well, so congratulations to them and Coach Seawright. Please keep up the good work. And then last but not least, this weekend, tomorrow, our members of our track team are going to Yale for Invitational. So it's a very special Invitational with a lot of great schools and athletes in the Northeast. So good luck to our runners and all our competitors. Thank you.
Okay, last but not, we stopped to show up.
Everybody, I wanted to show you just a few numbers that are not as grand as the budget, so we can end on a positive note. This, one chart indicates our 2016, 2017 school year numbers for our classified students spending time inside the regular classroom. So for those of you not familiar, PL 94142 from 43 years ago, I want to say, guarantees all kids to be educated in the environment as appropriate to their needs, the least restrictive environment as appropriate to their needs. So for us, this chart is great news. If you look all the way to the left, you'll see the 80% plus indicator, which is students spending 80% or more of their school day in the general education environment. So as you can see, Haldane, the dark blue, were 76.7% for the last school year compared to similar districts, which are the middle bar and then the state average, which is the right light blue bar. So there's a lot to celebrate there. I think we can all be particularly proud of that. And I think the Haldane Academy has something to do with those numbers too, having brought a number of students back from out of district placements. As you can see, our numbers on the far right side, 3.9 to 3.7 to 4.5. ODP stands for out of district placement. Many of our students returned last school year from out of district placements to the academy. So at both ends, that we're just on par with similar district groups and below state average and out of district placement, and that in 80% or more of the time in the regular education classroom is a fantastic thing too. And I think that's also indicative of the great work that our teachers are doing K-12 in the ICT classrooms, which would be the integrated co-teaching environment and educating as many kids as appropriate alongside their general education peers with a general education teacher. And just to highlight that, our numbers from 1516 were 73.5%, 80% or more in the, in the general education classroom. Those numbers did jump for the 1617 school year. So I thought this chart would be helpful and encouraging as we enter the annual review season for IEPs, that we're proud and excited about these numbers and are, I believe, maintaining them this year. We don't have the 1718 numbers right now. Going into the 1819 school year, want to maintain those, if not increase them, at least for the least restrictive environment as we develop more strategies and develop our ICT model to make sure that we can educate kids in the least restrictive environment. Okay? Thanks.
Okay.
Before you dismiss, we need to schedule, we don't have to do it right now. Or maybe your dinner with the administrators? I don't even know if David and Marion.
No.
No.
So, I don't know, like, just to.
Well, it's typically, it could happen before a workshop meeting.
Before a workshop meeting. Yeah, when you'd be around anyway.
Next month's workshop.
You're talking about for the, what, darn who faculty?
Yeah, we were talking about, yeah, with tenure.
Tenure.
And dinner.
This week, we've been, it's on our radar.
Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, moving on to committee minutes, they are here.
Thanks, guys.
For your browsing.
They're here for your viewing pleasure.
Viewing pleasure, yes. Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, our public seems to have dwindled down to reporters. Any comments, questions at this time? Okay. Okay, moving on to consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. It's been some time since we met, these are for approvals, so December's, right.
Sent to us in December.
Sent to us in December, right. So, may I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Personnel.
Personnel? Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business superintendent search, I had received, and I shared with the rest of the board, an email from Dr. Ryan at Bosse's, he's informed us that the search is well on its way, he has received several responses to the ads, and that will be running through February 2nd, and at that time, the ad will be closed, the search will be ending on February 2nd, and we'll move forward in terms of the process where they'll be doing their screening and making some recommendations to the board.
So, what's the process, I would really like to get, right, so we know, when we met with them, like, there's a calendar, right, so the, the, an initial screening, community, you know, the final interviews, it would be great, and I think he had some recommended dates for those times, but it would be great, I think we need to make decisions about where we want to conduct those meetings, what day we want to conduct those meetings, you and I have some, a task that he assigned us, so that we're ready to hit the ground running with contract negotiations with whoever we hire. What's the process for you?
I think, we have to wait till February 2nd, I think they were waiting to see how many applicants they were going to receive.
Okay, for some reason, I thought that he had a sense of why this week, it'll after a couple of weeks.
They did, but I haven't really firmed up those dates with him just yet, but I will do so.
But you could do that via email, maybe, if you just ask them for, because we're talking about three days, basically, of interviews, we're expecting three days, right? Because we would hold the interviews on three separate days.
Right.
And he had.
For the finalists.
Or the finals.
What Peggy's saying is, let's nail it down, so we all make sure they're all available.
Well, just because right now, I'm not scheduling any, any travel for February and March, and maybe I'm being too conservative, but.
Right. I had thought it was going to be, preliminarily, they had mentioned to us possibly the end of February, beginning of March, I'm not sure that they're still on target with that, but I will circle back with him.
Okay. And I'd be happy to hop on the phone with you and him, if that would be.
Yeah, I think the sooner we can nail down those dates, the better.
The better, for sure. And the location was the other.
Yeah, because I think, because we have to, we have to, we want to, we have to identify a location.
And Linda can help with that, she did before, did it before.
So.
So, I'll circle back with Dr. Ryan.
But why couldn't we go, I mean, why couldn't we go ahead and make, I mean, we know we're going to get candidates, and we know we're going to start interviewing, so why couldn't we start preliminarily creating our calendar?
I think he's willing to do, I think he is willing to do that with us, I think what Laura's saying is, we just need to circle back and firm up and make sure. Yeah.
Fits with, it's not just Dr. Ryan, it's also Lynnell and John, and we have to make sure.
But they're not in.
And we're not the only search that they're doing, so I'm.
When we interview, when we interview, they're going to give us the list of, what, six or seven candidates to interview, right?
The first round, yeah.
The first round. They're not there, are they?
I think they have to be made available that night.
Or they come, okay.
I think so.
Yeah, you know what, now I think about it, yeah, they are there, but those search people were there.
For sure they were.
So, they are there, okay, right.
So, that's all I.
So, we can't make it.
Right.
Independent of that.
Right.
Yeah, so not like, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but I would just, I have consciously
No, I think it's a good suggestion.
Not made any work travel commitments for February and March, or personal work travel, visiting, you know, which.
Definitely, no, we all, we all have busy schedules ourselves, so it's definitely something that I will circle back and try to start to firm up some dates and share.
Did we say we weren't going to do the restaurant thing, right? Did we say that? Did we address that?
You know, we didn't address that.
We.
I'm wondering what the restaurant thing is.
When we interviewed the second round, we went, we took, we went to, we went to a restaurant, like, with Diana. When we interviewed Diana for the second round, we went to, we went to a restaurant.
That was, but that wasn't, we didn't do that with all of the candidates, it was just after we decided. We had decided that Diana was probably our match, and then there was like a last.
No.
Yeah, we didn't do that with Diana.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
We just did that with Diana.
No, we, we did it with, no, we did, we did it with, I can't remember where we went.
But we didn't go anywhere.
No, one evening.
Okay, it doesn't really, I mean, we could do whatever.
Oh, it's because there was a snow day.
Yes.
We did breakfast.
Yes, we were going to do a dinner.
We were going to do a dinner, you're so right, there was a snow day.
Right. So, it was, but that was, that was based on the consultants, that they felt that we should go to the second round, should be more informal, a meal, and so forth, so, you know, I, so, I mean, I, I would say we should, I don't know about if we need to go that far, but I, I, the idea of a meal would be, like, maybe instead of like a restaurant, just like sandwiches or something like that, or something like.
A less formal.
A less formal, like, round table rather than.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to suggest I'm the only person with a busy schedule, but my memory of that presentation was that they're getting, pretty soon after it closes, it's not going to be that long until we can do the first round, the, like, there's a meeting with them, anyway, that's all, and Laura said, yeah, she's going to do it, so we can stuff talk it.
So, but maybe the answer is, we send in what we can't do right off the bat, so we can X out those days.
All right, I think actually then folks should, that's some.
No, I know, that. I think the first step is Laura just talks to Dr. Ryan, and he says, I'm thinking the last week of February.
That's exactly how he posed the community forum, he said, I'm thinking this week, these are possible dates, circle back, let me know, and I think that's what he's going to do with these upcoming dates.
So, let him drive it, and then.
Because you have to, he has to coordinate with the candidates as well, so it's, there's a couple of different pieces that we have to, so let me email him and, or have a conversation, and we'll talk about.
That's good.
The next steps. Okay, any additional communication from the public? No. Our one and only. Okay, then moving on to new business, Ms. Fomulara.
We didn't do a consent agenda personnel, did we do that?
Yes.
We did, oh, sorry. That's okay, that's right.
I said, we're not used to these long, long meetings, but we've had a lot of business to take care of here.
We haven't had a meeting in a long time.
Right. Just a month, but it feels like forever.
The first item is the CSC, CPSC, recommendations and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education, and the Committee on Preschool Special Education, as indicated.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The second item is the approval to reschedule the public hearing on the potential use of funds from the repair reserve for the boys' and girls' bathroom renovations. The recommended action is that the Board of Education reschedules the January 16, 2018 public hearing on the potential use of funds from the repair reserve for the boys' and girls' bathroom renovations that was canceled due to inclement weather, to Tuesday, February 6, 2018, at 6:30 PM, prior to the previously scheduled business meeting at 7:00 PM.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. And the board needs to be, kind of, step the hearing, right?
Yeah. Because we, there's going to be a roll call.
A roll call?
No, 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 that's for the secret, right, don't mind, sorry.
The next item is the approval on the updated Haldane School Budget Calendar 2018-2019, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the calendar, the attached updated Haldane School Budget Calendar for 2018-2019.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, if there are no other comments or communications, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.